Welcome. This is the regular City Commission, Oregon City Commission Work Session for Tuesday, June 7th. Before we start, as always, I would ask you, if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. I want to call the roll, Ms. Rigs.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg is absent this evening, and Mayor Holliday.
So, moving on, anybody got future agenda items for the City Commission? You guys are too easy.
Yeah.
Okay, then, moving on, discussion item 16332, Oregon Liquor Control Commission Presentation on Licensing Recreational Marijuana, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening, Commissioner. So tonight, we'll be providing another update on the recreational medicinal marijuana regulations that we're putting together. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Pete Walter, the staff responsible for this project right now. What, dude?
Thanks very much. So, planning staff has just started the process of drafting time, place, and manner regulations for marijuana facilities in anticipation of getting that adopted before November. And as we go down this path, we invited OLCC to come and present on the state process for licensing these facilities. And that's going to help us understand what has happened at the state level already, and what the definitions are, what the process is for licensing and testing, and I think we'll all learn a great deal from this. So I'd like to just introduce them and invite them to come up. Thank you.
We've got no presentation.
Where's our utensils? We've got nothing.
We have no pens.
We've got no pens, no paper.
Hey, 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 eh!
You know, when Jamie was doing this, it was all here.
Yeah, where's Jamie?
We don't have pencils, probably, enough.
Yeah.
Now, what does it mean?
This means we better be taking notes now, I think, since we put her through this. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, welcome.
Thank you, and my name is Danica Hipson. I'm the Director of Statewide Licensing and Compliance for the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you for having us here today. I'm just going to do a really brief overview of the regulations or the regulatory framework statewide for recreational marijuana, both from our agency and the other agencies involved. Then I'm going to turn it over to our policy analyst, Amanda Borup. She's going to go into a little more depth of what OLCC is doing in terms of its regulations. And then I'm going to turn it over to our Licensing and Compliance Technician, Patrick Owen, who's here today to give you a little bit more understanding of what our licensing process is. So, really, regulating recreational marijuana is a multi-agency process, and we've been coordinating with a number of other state agencies in order to put the laws and rules together. From OLCC's perspective, what we are responsible for is licensing of recreational licensees. We're responsible for licensing the producers, the growers. We're responsible for licensing the processors that make extracts and edibles. Responsible for licensing wholesalers that can buy and sell wholesale, and the retail establishments that will sell to the ultimate consumer. We're also responsible for licensing the laboratories that will do the testing. We're also charged by statute with adopting rules for packaging, maintaining some standards regarding child safety and that sort of thing. We're also responsible for working in coordination with Oregon Health Authority for doing a pre-approval process for both packaging and labeling. What we are not responsible for is personal possession, personal use, home grow, or medical marijuana. All of that would be governed by local law enforcement, or in terms of the medical marijuana, Oregon Health Authority. The other agencies that are really heavily involved in the recreational marijuana market establishment is the Oregon Department of Agriculture. They're responsible for licensing food establishments, which would include any of the processors that make edibles. They're also responsible for regulating the weights and measurements, and the types of scales that must be used to weigh the products. They're also responsible for the pesticide regulation, and they have put out some standards of what would be acceptable and not acceptable pesticides that can be used in the production of marijuana. The Oregon Health Authority is responsible for developing the testing requirements, and they've established approximately four to five different required tests that every product or batch of product will need to have before it's sold in the recreational system. They're also responsible for certifying the labs that will do the testing through their accreditation body or lab. And they're also responsible for establishing both the labeling requirements and the serving and dosage. Finally, then, there's also the Department of Revenue, who's responsible for the tax collection at the retail level. So, for now, I'll turn it over to Amanda Borup, who will go into a little more detail about the regulation from OLCC's perspective.
So, this is kind of just a little bit about the OLCC. So you probably all are aware of what we do around liquor, and it's going to be a very similar program with marijuana. The OLCC is going to be concerned with public safety and also with public health, to a certain extent. The public safety kind of starts with what's called the COLE memo. The COLE memo was a federal guidance that was released a couple of years ago, basically around medical marijuana states, but it also has been moved into the recreational marijuana states. And they have eight principles, basically, that the federal government says a state needs to look at when allowing medical or recreational marijuana use. And that goes into distribution to minors, keeping the revenue out of the hands of gangs and cartels, watching for out-of-state diversion, and using it associates with violence or drug driving. And so what we've done is, when we've implemented the program, we've looked at these eight reasons or eight things they want us to do, and we've put in things that will make it so that they can't, it would make it harder to do this kind of stuff. So, starting with the cannabis tracking system. So what this is going to do is it's going to track the marijuana in the retail markets from the plant until it's sold to a consumer. So, a good way to think about this is kind of like a spinach recall in a grocery store. So, when there's spinach recall, the grocers know exactly what spinach to pull from the shelf. And the reason they can do that is because it has a tracking number of barcode on it. And it's going to be the same thing with the marijuana. So at any time, the OLCC would be able to look at the system, know where the marijuana is within the system, and then where it's been previously. And with the weights and measures, the weights will be tracked along the way, too. So that way, you'll be able to see common themes throughout the industry, probably at the end of the first year. We're also going to be putting into place the child-resistant packaging. So, all marijuana items that are sold in a retail store will be sold in child-resistant packaging. Everything other than the flower itself will be sold in child-resistant resealable packaging. So that way, after a first use, the consumer could go ahead and reseal the package and make it child-resistant again. That being said, it's important to remember that child-resistant is just that, it's not child-proof, but it is a barrier between the marijuana item and the children. As Danica said, the Oregon Health Authority is in charge of the dosing requirements. Right now, in their temporary rule, edible dosages are half the dosage of Colorado and Washington. So Oregon is starting out at a very smaller rate than both of those states. The idea, people might say that it's too small, you know, but if they wanted to take more, you know, they would have that option as a consumer, but the dosages will be smaller, and it'll be easier for people to understand what they're doing. They also have a universal symbol that they developed, which is on the front of every package, making it obvious that the package contains marijuana. They're also going to be testing for pesticides. Most states, we've heard recently, are actually looking at our laboratory testing rules to model their own, including Colorado, Washington, and Alaska. So we've been meeting, OLCC started meeting with the groups last summer, and then the Oregon Health Authority took it over after the House Bill 3400 passed, and the authority went to them. So they're able to be doing a lot of looking at current testing in the market and what needs to be done to make it a consumer-safe product. As far as the regulatory environment, basically, our compliance philosophy is going to focus around education, and then compliance when necessary. So what we're starting out doing is trying to make all the rules available. We're trying to be open to the public, to the industry, be able to answer questions when needed, and then, when things happen that we actually do need to go in and be regulatory agency, we will do that, just as we do for alcohol. And then we'll be doing minor decoy operations. Minor decoy operations will be similar to what we run in liquor stores or liquor establishments currently, where we'll send somebody in who's underage, and they'll try to purchase it. And the difference with that, at this point in time, is I believe it's a cancellation of the license.
I believe it's cancellation, but it's treated more seriously than we do in liquor.
And that was a decision by our Rules Advisory Committee that was held during this process. Oops, sorry. All right.
So, hold on, I've got to ask a question. So there is no intermediate step?
Yes, there is an intermediate step. I believe that the first violation for selling to a minor is a category three violation, which comes with, I believe, a 10-day suspension or a monetary fine, and then anything subsequent will be elevated. I believe it's the third time that it would be a proposed cancellation.
Okay, thank you.
So what we've done so far, Measure 91 passed, as you all know, in November 2014. The first thing that OLCC did was do a listening sessions across the state of Oregon to see what people's concerns were generally around Measure 91. We used that to form our, feedback from that, to form our subcommittees and our questions around our rules and what really needed to be cleared up as far as, you know, public safety, the concerns of the public, and then also the needs of the industry. During that whole process, the legislature passed House Bill 3400, which really changed Measure 91 quite a bit. So we were able to go ahead and kind of pivot at that point and work with what was House Bill 3400 to put our rules into place. What's going on right now in Oregon is the Early Start Program, and that was not House Bill 3400, but it was a 2015 legislation that allows medical marijuana dispensaries to sell the recreational products for a limited basis. And that's going to sunset in December of this year. So at that point in time, a medical dispensary would either go back to being purely a medical dispensary, or they would apply with the OLCC to be a purely recreational store. So there won't be a mix between the stores after December of this year. As part of our outreach and our education, this is just kind of a slide of our numbers. Our website actually has over 2 million hits at this point in time, which is really surprising for a state agency. So we're trying to put as much information on that as we can, just so that it's available for people, because we want people to be successful, we want people to be compliant, and so we're trying to give them as much information as possible. And part of that information is our Business Readiness Guide. And the Business Readiness Guide basically talks about the best way to run a business in Oregon. You know, aside from the OLCC regulations, you know, what do you need to do as far as building codes? You know, when do you need to contact OSHA? You know, everything you would really want to know about running a successful business, as far as state agencies are concerned, is in that book, and people have found it really helpful. And I believe they've been reaching out to their cities and counties when they need to, so that they are able to run a successful business.
Just a question there on your temporary rules piece. We had a guy who runs a marijuana dispensary come in, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, testify before us. He invited me to come down and see his place of business, so I did that. And one of the things that he talked about a lot is, they feel like they have to go to your website every day to make sure that there isn't some new rule they weren't aware of.
So, and I understand that. But the problem right now, like I said, is that the medical dispensaries right now are under the Oregon Health Authority's jurisdiction, not actually under OLCC. And so there's a lot of confusion in the industry itself on who's actually regulating them. So what happens and what will happen with our rules is our rules are temporary right now. So we have a link on our website that says temporary rules, and people can click on that. That's actually for, right now, next week, we're going to have a new set of temporary rules. But we will, what we are going to try to do, and attempt, and hopefully, so far, we've been doing a good job at it, we're going to be able to make it clear what people need to read. It is confusing for people, though, because...
So why would you put stuff on there that people didn't need to read?
We won't. I think, so, he's looking at the Oregon Health Authority website when he says that?
I don't think so, no. He was talking about the OLCC. He has a recreational shop that contains medical.
And I understand. The problem is, is that we have no oversight over the medical stores, even if they do have recreational in them. 100% of the rules they follow right now are through the Oregon Health Authority.
Good.
And so, and people do get really confused. We get a lot of calls from dispensaries who think they're licensed by us, because they're called a recreational store. But I guess something, and something I tell them on the phone a lot when they call, is when they're licensed by the OLCC, they'll have an actual physical license from the OLCC to hang in their store. And so that's a good way that they'll know that they've gone, other than, at that point, they'll know they've gone through our licensing process. The term recreational, I think, people, since it's brand-new, as soon as they hear the word recreational, they think OLCC. And so it does make, it makes things a little bit difficult and a little bit confusing for everybody.
So I assume at some point in time, you'll have some rules that are a little more congealed than, you know, an undone bowl of jello?
Yes, we will. And frankly, it's been a, it's been a long road on our end as well, because Measure 91 passed, we started the process of putting together our rules, the legislature went back into session, completely gutted 91 and created a whole new set. So we had to start from that point. And so we passed the rules that we have in place, actually were passed in October of last year, and actually have not changed. So our rules have been consistent. OHA has been under the same boat, though. They were also given a set of guidelines that were wholly changed, and then they've had some additional changes come through this, the legislation that just passed back in February. And so their rules have been constantly evolving, but a lot of that has had to do with the legislature just continually updating the law. But any recre, any store currently, we have not licensed a single retail shop. They're all actually under OHA's provision. They are just allowed by statute to sell to recreational customers right now.
Until December 2015?
Correct.
Or 2016, okay.
And at that point in time, there will be no coming in, unless, when there's not a legislative session between now and then, so I think we can...
We're all safe in the legislature's session. You can go ahead.
So the, what the OLCC did do initially, when, after Measure 91 passed and while House Bill 3400 was being worked on, is we, no agency had any oversight over general what was legal in Oregon. So we put together this website. The OLCC's name logo's not on it. It's not really something that we're affiliated with, it's just the basics of the law. So when people call and they have questions about the law itself, we can refer them to this website, and they can go there, and they can get the basics. And it helps, you know, not so much with the confusion between dispensaries and retail stores, but it helps with the general confusion about what actually was voted in and what people are allowed to do and what they're not. As you know, there's local options involved in this, so local cities and counties can opt out. If an unincorporated, if a county opts out, it's for the unincorporated areas, and then the cities have the choice to do what they would like. OLCC will not grant licenses and opt-out jurisdictions. We have a land-use compatibility form that's the first required piece of our application process. And if that's denied, then the application stops there. Also, though, it's important to keep in mind that by opting out, you do lose a portion of the tax revenue. So I just talked about the land-use compatibility statement. The local jurisdictions also have time, place, and manner, and so they can do any local ordinances they would like with that. And then we also have, with our producer licenses, water compliance and energy estimates. So to be able to be a producer in the recreational system, you're going to have to prove that you have legal access to water, whether that be from a water supplier, water collection, or from a well. You'll have to work with the Water Resources Department to actually prove that that is a legal access. And then just quickly, the taxes, on the taxes with Department of Revenue. Right now, with the Early Start, which is through the Oregon Health Authority, the taxes are 25%. Once the OLCC licenses retailers, the taxes will be 17%, with a local option add-on of 3%. That revenue goes to the Common School Fund, mental health, alcoholism, and drug services, state police, cities, counties, and then the Oregon Health Authority. The OLCC does not receive tax revenue from this program, we're completely fee-based. And so just for an idea of what the taxes look like so far, right now, under the Oregon Health Authority, they're completely self-reported. So I want you to keep that in mind, that there's no tracking, nothing like that, this is totally self-reported, and they've got 6.84 million for the first two months of this year.
Projected to be 42 million, is that the number I heard?
I believe that's the case, yes.
And it could change once there's actually, if not self-reported, you know?
Say it's not so.
And I think we're running close to being on time, so Patrick, why don't you just briefly, if you don't mind, just walk through the licensing process?
Absolutely. So I can quickly, okay, I can quickly go through this, and I think we might want to have some time for any questions. So my name is Patrick Owen, I am the Licensing and Compliance Coordinator. My job is keeping all of our investigators and inspectors performing consistently across the state. Danica, our Director, briefly talked about the individual license types. We have five license types available, and then a research certificate as well. They all have differing privileges to allow some control over how products move through the market. The first of these, the one our focus has been on early this year, is the producers, who are the growers, the cultivators, and they have specific security requirements. Oregon is unique in that we have a significant number of outdoor growers, Colorado and Washington. They'll see indoor grows, so we were essentially working blind with our regulations here, but we've put the same security standards in place for producers as other license types. Laboratories are a second license type, those are required for everybody to function within compliance with state law. Testing is required of all products prior to it reaching the consumer to ensure safety, lack of pesticides, lack of mold, and then potency testing is also required by the laboratories. Laboratories cannot share an interest in a business for which they're doing testing. It prevents conflict of interest between the license types. Processors, this is one that has gotten a lot of interest. Processors include the extract and concentrate producers. So our butane hash oil producers have significant safety requirements upon them. It also includes edible manufacturers, so people making the cannabis cookies, products such as that, and then topical makers as well. These are products designed to be applied to the skin or hair, lotions and shampoos or other similar products. Wholesalers are sort of a catch-all license type. They can buy any sort of product and sell it to any other licensee of the commission within the product distribution limits. They cannot sell directly to consumers. Researchers, as I mentioned, are a certificate rather than a license type, they're held to a different set of standards. We've been directed to work with the Health Authority on reviewing research proposals to ensure they're in compliance with state law. And finally, we have the retail licenses, which will be what we're talking about when we look at the stores where people can buy their recreational products. And that's the one most people are familiar with. It's going to look very similar to what the dispensaries look like as far as product control and access and security requirements. Finally, there's the marijuana worker permits, which are the, they're also called handlers permits. They're required for anybody working in the cannabis industry to have, if you handle product or responsible for tracking product or managing employees who handle the product, you'll be required to have a worker permit. There's an educational component tied into this, so everybody who holds one of these permits will be required to have a minimal level of education on proper handling and service of the product. This is a brief overview chart. It was designed for public consumption during our educational periods. Perhaps consumption is the wrong term to use here, but it's a really high-level overview of what the licensing process looks like. An applicant initially will log on to our online licensing system and supplies with some basic information about their business structure, who's involved, and then provide supplemental forms regarding the layout, the security measures, and other required information based on the license type for which they're applying. The next step is what's most likely to concern you, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, the local government review process. Unlike alcohol, this has been left very open. There is a lot of option for local control under the Time, Place, and Manner regulations. So what we require from any jurisdiction that isn't an opt-out is that an applicant go to that local jurisdiction and receive a land-use compatibility statement that shows that the proposed use of the property is not prohibited based on the zoning codes of the local jurisdiction. Some jurisdictions have tied in the prohibited use into a local licensing process. For example, it is a prohibited use in the city of Portland to engage in any cannabis licensed activity without first getting approval through their licensing authority. So they've essentially set up a dual licensing structure. And I use that as an example simply because I previously worked for the city of Portland prior to coming to the OLCC. So there's a lot of option for control there. If a jurisdiction is not an op, if a local jurisdiction is an opt-out jurisdiction, we don't require that land-use compatibility statement. We will simply look at our records to see that that use is not allowed at all, and that jurisdiction will deny the license.
I have a question on that. So, the state, though, they have a buffer around schools, so they have rules that are at least, you know, setting a precedence there. So it would be that, and then whatever the jurisdiction has.
That's correct. So this, that's in addition to the land-use compatibility. So there's a 1,000-foot buffer around any school, as defined in statute, for retail locations only. Local jurisdictions are free to put greater restrictions in place. That's the first step in our review. After that, we look at the details of the security plans, the layouts, we'll work with the applicants to clear up any outstanding issues. Typically, we have some discussions back and forth and some additional information that's required during the application review. Once all the paperwork is complete and it appears to be in compliance with our rules, we will schedule a site inspection, so we are required, under our rules, to inspect every location prior to licensure to ensure they are compliant with the security requirements primarily, and also other sections of rules and code that will apply to them. For example, processors who engage in extract processing have to have things like iWash stations in place. Finally, once the inspection is passed, it's reviewed now by our staff and committee, including our Executive Director. If approved, the licensee can then pay the license fee, at which point the application becomes a license, and they can engage in their licensed privileges. So it was a very brief overview. Are there any questions about the process I can ask? Can you answer?
Well, I was curious, you know, I was really hoping we could wait a year and watch, and watch Colorado, Washington, and...
Figure it out.
And, you know, because I was curious, what you've learned from those folks, and kind of mistakes they've made, and that's helped your process, so what kind of things have you learned from them that we're doing differently here that's better, maybe? Is that...
Well, I personally have spent time in Colorado as part of my position here at OLCC, working with compliance officers in the industry, and then the Medical Enforcement Division in Colorado, as well as the city of Denver. We have learned a lot about realistic enforcement options. For example, Colorado required all cameras to be accessible via Internet protocol so that the MED, the Marijuana Enforcement Division, could log into those cameras and view the premises.
That could be a mistake.
Well, it opens up many tools, but realistically, monitoring all of these locations was not practical, so it was a requirement that was put in place, enforced, and then never used. So we did learn from that. We require minimal security requirements, access to the footage, and that they keep a backup, and that they provide that to us when requested. And failure to do so is obviously a violation of the license. Washington put a limit on the number of licenses in place. Oregon has not done that. We're allowing the market to sort of set, to create the number of licensees it needs. Obviously, that will have the same impact as any other free market, so we expect many businesses to succeed, and many to fail, and many to consolidate more successful entities.
I think I want to just add a little bit to that, too. Really early on, after Measure 91 was passed, as soon as OLCC hired the initial staff to be working on this, we met with both Colorado and Washington quite a bit, and talked through their administrative rules, what had worked for them, what hadn't worked for them. And so initially, we were modeling our administrative rules off of basically what they said their mistakes were. So we got to start, you know, 10 steps in front of them from the get-go, which was really nice, and they were very open with us, and still are, as far as what's working and what's not working for them.
Finally, I'd just like to add, too, I think that we had the benefit of being able to go through an extensive RFP process for the seed-to-sale contractor that we ultimately hired, and we selected Franwell, which is the same contractor that did Colorado's system. And I think that not only have they turned out to be just a phenomenal company to work with, and their product really good, we have the benefit of them working out... with and their product really good, we have the benefit of them working out a lot of their glitches that they had in Colorado. And they've gotten in there, they worked with our rules, they put together a system that we're already seeing is working with the fifty-something licenses that we've issued. People are already getting their plants in, getting them tagged. We can watch it in real time where those plants are at all times. So I think that that is another benefit of having those states come before us.
Any else?
Just one more thing. And I worry about the kids, and you mentioned a, this is my surety, or bringing out the best in kids here, so, but you mentioned a child-resistant package. What is that? Is that like a Ziploc or what is that?
No, so
Package you can't open, Brian.
Yeah, so Amanda can probably speak to the specific standard that we're looking at. This was one where initially we did not have it defined in rule, and we were going to work with OHA in order to, to basically take it on a case-by-case basis. That turned out quickly to be problematic, and so we've set a new standard that's going to be going into rule very shortly.
And so the standard is, it's based off the federal child-resistant standard. And so what happens is the federal government has a program that third-party certifiers use to certify child-resistant packaging. And that includes things like poisons that you would have underneath your sink or in your garage, and also pill bottles. So they're also, they're child-resistant, but they actually have to be accessible to adults over the age of 55. So what will happen is that these products will have to be certified by the third-party certifier that is able to do it for the federal government, and so these products will be child-resistant. It's also, I think, important to add in that part of the rules don't allow look-alike products. So you won't be able to have a marijuana candy bar that looks just like a Snickers bar. That won't be approved and it won't be allowed in the stores. Also, you won't be able to have products that have things that might be appealing to children, like cartoon characters or, you know, dancing fruit, things like that. Everything will come through, both for the medical and the recreational programs, will come through the OLCC and have to be approved before it can be on the store shelves.
I'm more worried about teenagers when it comes to that, but I have a couple of questions, too. So right now, you're educating and you're going through, you're working with applicants to get up and running. About how many applicants do you have for recreational marijuana? Do you see large numbers, or can you tell me a little bit about that?
Currently, for all license types, we have a little over a thousand applicants. Approximately 700 of those are producers, and it's about a 50-50 split, not exactly, but indoor and outdoor producers in that. And the rest are the processors, wholesalers, retailers, and labs. Currently, we only have six lab applicants. That is one area that we think we actually need more applicants. And we've issued, I think, 52 licenses as of last week, and we have another, about 14 to 15 that'll be issued this week. And that's an approximate amount that we're, and that's continually growing weekly until we get through all the applications.
So they'll be issued and then it'll be effective?
The day that it's issued.
Oh, okay.
Well, the day that they pay their license fee. So that's important because it allows some flexibility for those coming out of the medical market to shut down their medical operation and then move into the recreational.
Are there a lot of people switching from medical to recreation?
Yes, there is, there's a fair amount, and a number of them have decided to do the switch over immediately. A couple others that we've heard are just waiting, you know, they're going to finish out their growing season and their harvest, to take care of their patients, and then they're going to pay for their license and move into the rec market.
I have one other question.
Because we're starting with, I think it's important to say what we're doing. We're starting with the growers
Okay.
And then moving into the processors, the wholesalers, and then the retailers this fall. So we'll stagger it with the supply chain.
All right, you guys have your work cut out for you. Sounds like you're doing a good job. What about hemp fabric or any other products made from that? Are, do you regulate those, or where does that fall in?
We don't necessarily regulate it. The Department of Agriculture regulates a lot of that. We will not, in our rules, we will not allow hemp production on the same location as a medical, I'm sorry, as a recreational grow site. Part of that is just a compliance issue. When you look at a hemp plant versus a marijuana plant, you cannot tell the difference until you get it tested to see what the makeup of it is. So that will be something that's prohibited. Our retail stores will be able to sell certain hemp products if it's been tested through our system. So that'll be kind of a requirement.
But most growers wouldn't want to grow hemp and marijuana on the same property anyway, because the hemp actually doesn't do well with the marijuana.
Pollination will also reduce the efficacy of their marijuana products, so.
Surprisingly, we have had a number of applicants that are asking about it, though, to do it in the same location.
That's weird. Chief Band, do you have something?
Yeah, I have one kind of question about staffing, and it's, prefacing, it's about, are you guys really going to have enough staffing hired to do all this? And it appears, so on alcohol, if somebody applies from the other side of OLCC for a license for alcohol, the business, whoever the business owner is, needs to come us and get clearance from them, from us, from the city. And usually, I know it goes through my office and we, I wasn't sure what to do, so I contacted OLCC and said, hey, I've got to sign these off. What do, if we accept or deny, what should we accept or deny? And they said, well, even if you deny it, we're going to give them the license anyway, so it doesn't really matter. So I guess it's a formality that we go through that's kind of a waste of time, but the business owner needs it, so we do it for them, but it's, it doesn't serve much of a purpose. What I'm getting from what you're saying is that this is going to be a much more real process, a more strict process. Is that true? It's going to be harder to get a marijuana business license than it is an alcohol license?
I think that is very true, depending on what the local regulations are. I think that the difference between marijuana and alcohol is that there's a lot more local control on regulations that you put into place for what types of business license uses, or other zoning restrictions, or any other type of time, place, and manner restriction. On the liquor side, unfortunately, we are actually statutorily constrained by the reasons we can actually deny a license, and that's where that problem comes in. It's a requirement by statute that we ask for local approval. However, there's a really small bucket of things that we can actually look at, and that's why they don't come out the way that a lot of local jurisdictions would care to have it do.
And even what you're saying, in time, place, and manner is what we can restrict, not necessarily the guy's a sex offender or something like that. I mean, it's not a criminal thing. It's more, the city is going to be saying yes or no to time, place. Are they fitting, is this business who's applying fitting our time, place, and manner restriction?
Well, Chief Band, having dealt with that on the other side, it can be very frustrating, so I certainly understand that. As Director Hitzman was saying, there's a lot more option for control at the local level. For example, if a local jurisdiction incorporated into its zoning code a requirement that you receive a city license to produce marijuana before you would get an approval on the land use compatibility statement, and as part of that licensing process, a background check with minimal standards was required, the local jurisdiction would then have the option to say, no, this is prohibited because you were unable to obtain the license required under our zoning code.
So we could reasonably put that into our code, something about a minimal background?
Correct. It needs to be properly incorporated into the local zoning code. Time, place, and manner regulations are, can be part of that, but it's got to reflect to either a prohibited use or not a prohibited use.
And I would just like to say you should consult your city attorney on whether this reasonable time, place, and manner, or we can't give that advice.
It depends. That's an inside joke. It seems to me that it does not, OLCC, do a minimal background check on the applicants?
We do, absolutely, but we have specific standards that we need to adhere to as what we consider relevant to the licensure, what a city chooses to do relevant to their licensure.
So what do you consider relevant?
Danica, maybe you.
We're pretty much modeling liquor in this sense. It will depend on the crime, but we do run a background check, and we will look at any convictions that are related to the fitness to hold a license, and we deem that to be anything that's involving alcohol or drugs, with the exception of there's certain marijuana-related crimes that the statute actually does not let us consider. Most of them have to be two years or older, but there are certain ones that are exempted out. But anything involving drugs or alcohol, or violence, or threat of violence are considered relevant crimes that we can look at. So if that is present in somebody's background, even if, no matter when it occurred, we would consider a relevant conviction. Then we go through a good cause analysis, and there are certain factors that can be good cause to overcome that. The biggest one being passage of time. If it was something that happened 15 years ago, we would most likely say that enough good cause, enough time has passed to overcome the denial basis. But if it was more recent, and usually something within three to five years, we take a much harder look at, and the more severe the crime, the more passage of time we would require.
So given at this point at least, that this is all cash business, wouldn't financial crimes be a reasonable thing to look at?
It could be. We, I frankly have not actually seen one come through. That would be something, so we have a committee, a license policy committee, that is looking at every single one of these, because even though we're trying to model liquor for things like that, we maybe that we want to treat it a little differently. So that would be something we would bring, and we would have that discussion of whether we would consider it to be related, but that's a good point.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So do we have another presentation?
But not next.
So just as an aside, I might suggest that maybe we do a test at like 5:00 before we have a meeting to make sure everything's working before we. So next up, we have 16322 Waterfront Master Plan, Riverfront Clackamas Park Master Plan. Ms. Conrad?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you is the Waterfront Master Plan. It is under Commission Goal Number Three. The intent is to revisit the north end section of the Waterfront Master Plan. And so we're kind of coming back to you as it was a commission goal to let you know that I think we're ready to go forward with this, if you're ready to go forward with it. The funding is budgeted in this fiscal year budget. And just as a, just a brief, from where we were to where we are today, there was a 2002 Waterfront Master Plan that was done, and that was done by Walker Macy. Again, that was prior to my being here. We've also, in, from 2002 to present, we've done a 30% construction drawing for the new ramp location in Clackamas Park. We have not done the transportation portion of it to get it from the ramp to the parking lot. We've had some concept ideas for that, but that has not quite, we haven't vetted that quite yet. We feel like there should be a little bit more public process in that, and that could be incorporated into this master plan. The other piece of the projects that have been completed or semi-completed is there's been a 60% plan set for the improvement of the RV park. So that is also a component. So between all of these pieces kind of running around, I think we'd like to consolidate them into a master plan and get that concept rolling.
Well, this was kind of a surprise here, so, because I've been kind of working in the background on this concept plan, too. And mine kind of started with, obviously, kind of dredging the Willamette and thinking about the larger vessels being able to come up to the legacy project, you know, so, and from there, from talking to people, we start talking about the boat ramp and the fishermen and stuff. So I kind of, last night about midnight, I finally got time to put a little thing together here. Even though it's upside down, I'm going to hear about this probably, but if I could pass this around here and kind of show you what I was thinking about here, if you guys want to.
This is upside down, Brian.
I know it. I'm sorry, it was midnight, I don't know what else to tell you here.
And just to include, we are looking to start the existing Clackamas Boat Ramp Repair this next month.
Yeah, and that's, that's, how many we got? Four down there? Go ahead. Okay, so.
No, he just makes sure everyone knows.
Everybody got, all right. Anyway, so like I said, I started the dredging part, but I got to the boat ramp issue, and I had so many of the fishermen tell me that we really shouldn't, we should be exploring the Willamette side of it. And I know we had our consultant here, and I think he was charged with exploring just the Clackamas River and replacing it on the Clackamas. I think he spoke a little bit about the Willamette, and I'm thinking that we may want to explore that a little bit more. So, and before you jump on my case, you're Denise.
I promise not to jump on your case.
Thank you. Anyway, so I started looking at this, and so I did a little focus group with some fishermen here last Thursday morning, and these guys are heavy fishermen out there, and they're suggesting that really the boat ramp should be on the Willamette and not in the Clackamas just because of the fluctuation of that river. And it's number one, the first question I asked them was, well, do we really need another boat ramp here? I mean, we got Sportcraft, we got Mildred and Bar. Do we need another one, you know, right there and stuff? And they said, oh, yeah, you know, so. Anyway, so moving that boat ramp onto the Willamette and then taking the existing RV park and making that the boat trailer truck parking, I put that in there, and then where the existing boat ramp is, that would eventually become a pedestrian, very beach access for no boats, but it's such kind of a nice beach area for families and stuff to recreate there.
If the geese don't do their thing there.
Well, people would quit feeding the geese, that's the issue down there, so.
They would start eating the geese.
Yeah, start eating nicely later.
But yes, you're right, that would be a nice beach.
Yeah, so anyway, and that means like moving, and then we have to figure out, do we really want an RV park? And I think that that's probably something that we need to look at for the legacy project as far as accommodating tourists, that, we do need maybe the RV park, and we would move that over into the property next to McDonald's. Now, I know that's, I'm sorry, Eric, your real estate company was going to be involved here, but, you know. But turning that, you know, putting that into the RV park and taking that off the market, and I know it's a piece of urban renewal property and that would have to be looked at, but like I said, I just wanted to kind of make sure we explored this, how to look at that whole project down there. And the last thing is, obviously, you know, Rocky and I, we get involved with the family festival down there and the overflow parking thing, and I thought by taking the existing access road down to the RV park, if we widened that enough that we had parking on each side, and it was just traffic through the center of it, it might take another 30 or 40 feet of the park to widen that up to make it a parking area that you drive through down to the, for fishing. So I think that's kind of the gist of what I have been talking about. And I talked to the lady that's in charge of all the boat ramps, she's with the State Marine Board, and I asked her, I said, so, how about the Willamette? She goes, well, it's not out of the question, but it'd be expensive, and there's a few more hurdles you have to go through to get a license there, and then there's the option that you have to have the parking and the restrooms that go with a boat ramp and stuff. So that's my concerns right there, and I wanted to explore this because this isn't just a boat ramp issue, you know, I think there's, and we've got to remember, there's going to be like a thousand more people living down here at the Cove that are going to be using this park. And I think it's got to get, be more pedestrian if anything, and try to figure out how we can cut down the amount of traffic, automobile traffic that's going to go through that park, and how to make that park more pedestrian than having trailers with boats and stuff going through it and all this kind of stuff. So my thoughts.
So when you were talking to the lady from the State Marine Board, what is the, is there a specific distance from the boat ramp to restrooms?
Well, that's the question, and I didn't get that part.
Because, I mean, restrooms aren't cheap.
I know.
By no stretch of the imagination.
Well, this whole thing, this boat ramp isn't going to be cheap, Dan. So, and I don't know if they would say that the restrooms we have there, that's too far. I don't know. So that's another thing.
Well, I do think it's really important to go through the process for this. This master planning process will incorporate all that and try to get feedback. What type of public outreach are we looking at? And can you tell us a little bit about the process?
Typically, what we do is we put out an RFP or a bid for a Typically what we do is we put out an RFP or a bid for a consultant to do a master plan. At fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars is approximately what we have budgeted. And that person will come in, whoever's selected, they come in, we do multiple public input processes like we did with Glen Oak or Filbert Run where we do a vignette and people tell us what they want to see, what they like, what they don't like. They take all of that compulsive information, they put it in a concept and then go back to the public again. There's some maneuvering of the concepts based on feedback. It gets put back to staff level to kind of vet some of the pieces that were concept that may not be operative, maintenance items that need to be looked at. And then we kind of take the staffing pieces and the public input pieces and we put them together into a plan. We present the plan and then it goes to PrAC. PrAC also gets to vet this, then Planning Commission, or yes, Planning Commission and the City Commission. So it goes through an extensive public process.
Okay, so that's pretty standard. One, one thing that I think might be beneficial is in addition to that, maybe have like a work session with the company that does the master planning and the City Commission just to get feedback, you know, just to kind of interface the comments that we've gotten from citizens and ideas and working with staff.
We can do that. The other pieces, I know that PrAC was interested in asking the commission for PrAC and the commission to do maybe a joint work session in regards to this particular project.
Commissioner Smith?
So if we do a work session with PrAC and then another one, those need to happen before this whole other process starts.
Exactly.
And the reason I say that is, I'm, I'm, so this is my eighth year on, on the City Commission and we have talked about for that length of time whether or not we're going to have a boat or whether or not we're going to have an RV park or not. We've never decided that. Whether or not we want to sell that piece of land by McDonald's, we've never really settled that, even though there's a sign up there, we're still talking about not selling it. I think that's crazy. And now we have a boat ramp that we spent a lot of time studying where it should go and it came to us and we said, not anywhere close to what you showed us because that was not going to happen. So my worry is that we go through this master plan process and we come back and we again say, well, we're going to have an RV park because certain public wants it. We have a plan for what that RV park is going to look like, we've just never done anything with it. We even had a plan for tent camping beyond that, which we've never done anything with. So I think until the commission has a conversation and says, one, do we want a boat or do we want an RV park or not? Then we don't move forward unless we have that decision made. I mean, that should be a public process too, but, but how, how long does this keep going? And, and I can't believe we keep randomly saying we're going to sell properties and not sell properties and like it's, I mean, we've got a sign up there. That's, so I, I, I worry that we're just going to sit around for another few years or five years, ten years and still not know if we want to have a boat ramp or, or an RV park.
I, I have those concerns too. If it comes to us last, then we don't have a chance to address those issues that really need to be addressed before the process.
And the one other thing, I will say, this park as we all know is a major, major park with a lot of things going on, all hours of the day and night. If we decide as a city that there's an RV park in there, there's going to be a paid staff person, there should be a paid staff person in that park.
Or we could, or we could contract it.
Well, whatever. My point is, is if we're going to, if we decide as a city that that RV park is important, which I think it is, then we need to make sure it pencils in that there's a person there responsible, not a volunteer, not, you know, something that's, you know, a volunteer is not going to deal with the amount of problems that that park really entails. And if we're going to spend the money to put a RV park in there and figure out how to really make it work, then it needs to be, there needs to be a person there. And that's another conversation, but I just, we need to have either a couple of work sessions to just settle some of these big, major questions and have a dialogue before we spend too much time studying a whole bunch of things that we're just going to say no to or...
Well, and, and I think it's very important that the company that does the master plan is aware of these issues and not just thinking about the aesthetics.
And I agree. And in regards to the water transportation portion, like state highways coming into cities, there's regional plans, state plans. We have the same thing in the waterways. So the majority of our funding for our boat ramp facilities comes from the state.
Yeah.
In regards to the Willamette River, we have sport craft that's not very far from Clackamas Park. So sport craft being less than a mile. We have Meldrum bar a mile downriver, Cedar Oak boat ramp just across and about a mile down the river. It would be very difficult for us with their state plans to look at that and say there is a greater need in the Willamette than there is in the Clackamas for access for boaters. Our primary usage is fishermen in the Clackamas. And then in terms of permitting, the scour that comes across the Willamette on the Clackamas side, Clackamas Park side would be a permitting, not, it would be a greater permitting hurdle for us as a city to do on our own than if we are doing one that has an easier permitting possibility. Just for an example, when we did sport craft boat ramp, it cost us about twenty thousand dollars before we were even allowed to get a permit for testing. If we're doing something in the Willamette, we know our, our cost values are going to be exponentially higher. Probably three times higher for the Willamette than the Clackamas or the Clackamas. In that range, looking for funding, again, OSMB is our greatest funding mechanism to build these facilities. They probably are not looking to put us high on that ranking to put something in the Willamette. So if we're wanting to look at that, we have to look at being our own primary source of funding. I don't believe that OSMB is looking at that one as a primary or even a third or secondary. You know, it just doesn't pencil out in their transportation values. Clackamas Park in the Clackamas River is a high ranking, high value for Oregon Fish and Wildlife and OSMB.
Because the next one up is Carver, right?
It's a, it's a huge distance between us and them.
So three hundred yards is a major obstacle? I mean, you know, you get in the river, you turn right and you're in the Clackamas.
It's the, the steepness value. So when you go into the, into the Willamette for a ramp, your value to put a toe of the ramp in, you're going to have to take the bank and lay it in order to have your, your range to go straight down to the toe and have that length value.
Okay.
So it's the constructability factor. You're looking at three times the constructability there, more value than in the Clackamas.
Okay. So I have one final comment sort of to piggyback on Commissioner Smith and that is, is that I've been doing this on and off for almost twenty years. And if we had every nickel we spent on a waterfront master plan, we could build three restrooms down there. I mean, we continue to spend money. The last time I was on the commission, we spent a quarter of a million dollars on a, on a waterfront master plan that if you took it off the shelf today, that area would look nothing like what's in the plan. So I agree with Commissioner Smith that we ought to make some key decisions. Are we going to have an RV park? If so, where are we going to put it? Where are we going to put the boat ramp? Makes sense to me from what, what Ms. Conrad says that, you know, going to the Willamette side is really not an option. So we got to figure that out and make that decision. What was the last one, Rocky?
The, the lot, the vacant lot, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we just need to make some of those decisions first. I'm not comfortable at this point, I'm not comfortable going out to do this until we've made some of those other key decisions.
And part of my main concern as I think the rest, some of the rest of the commissioners was with that proposal of the, the boat ramp was taking out half to a quarter to a half of Clackamas Park. So if we decide that the place to build that new ramp is on the Clackamas side and in turn we also decide that there's no RV park, then that gives us a park back on that side. So it is a conversation that has to happen together, but I am absolutely opposed to doing anything with the plan that they showed of a boat ramp without...
Tearing out a third of the trees?
Well, a third of the entire park.
Yeah.
And then saying that somebody's going to walk over to an island surrounded by cars is, for a picnic is crazy. So, I mean, I think there's ways, and we also have talked about other possibilities for where the RV park can go too.
Any further discussion?
No, I think we've got some work sessions ahead of us.
Have we really confused you now?
I think, I think we can pull the, the last master plan that was approved, package that up for a work session and we've got identified three issues. As we review the plan, there may be other issues that come up and we kind of have that discussion.
Just for entertainment value, can you bring us all of the waterfront master plans that we've done in the last thirty years? I'm not kidding.
I can guarantee a couple, yeah, we'll, we'll go back and see what we can find.
Yeah, I, I think we really need to ask ourselves the question, what do we want this park to be?
Yeah.
What do we want it to be? And if we start there and deal with these issues, I think we'll spend our money well.
I think we need to answer those questions before we spend fifty thousand dollars on a consultant.
That's where I was going at.
Yeah.
Commissioner Polly was, that's why I started doing the whole thing. And knowing that what's going to happen at the Cove is also going to accelerate a lot of that stuff down there, so, okay?
Okay, so moving on. Sixteen three thirty-nine, Clackamas County Road Maintenance Funding Initiative and Mr. Lewis.
He's ever been able to play the night, right?
The screen doesn't work for us.
Yeah, no screen.
Oh, really?
Okay, well, do you have it?
We have it in, we've got...
So how do I know this was slides?
We have it unenvironmental for.
You want a copy of what we're going to be watching here?
I have my, I have my own copy.
It'll show up there. It was showing up there.
Okay, okay. All right, well, so, under the first slide is really just an introductory slide. Thank you for taking the time to put this on your work session agenda. The Board of County Commissioners is interested in coordinating a, the Clackamas County Cities to talk about Clackamas County Road Maintenance Funding. And really, I, I honestly believe that they're looking for input from the cities because I think that they know for this vote to be successful, if that's the direction that they take, they need the support of the cities. And so on Thursday, June ninth, they've, they've scheduled a open house, if you will, or a discussion of road funding. So I don't know if any of you are planning to attend, I got an email from Commissioner Minglebury, she's planning to attend.
When's that?
It's the ninth, from six to eight, it's at the Museum of the Oregon Territory.
It says this Thursday?
That's this Thursday. And what it sounds like is they've invited electeds from all the cities. I know Tony's been invited and so there'll be staff at that meeting as well. It sounds like Clackamas County is going to have their typical staff available to hear and listen and talk about their, some of their ideas that you may already be aware of, but, so I'm going to go ahead. Do I click this forward or?
Hey, just a second, so can you send this out a meeting request for that Thursday meeting? Thank you.
It's at moot, so.
Yes.
All right, so in May, we, we all voted, one of those of us that live in Clackamas County voted on measure thirty-three, or three, three dash three four eight. And that measure was really an advisory vote on whether or not the, the county voters would, would support a road funding initiative. And it passed, it passed, I think, sixty-eight percent. The, the challenge with that was that there wasn't a lot of information that they shared on what exactly they're thinking about in terms of which roads are going to do, how much they're going to do, is it going to be a gas tax? Is it going to be a vehicle registration fee or some combination thereof? But basically what, what we heard from the voters was, yeah, they support the, the idea of additional funding for road maintenance. And some of that road maintenance was for, the way they presented it was for, for safety improvements, other was for pavement maintenance kinds of things. But they talked about two options and one being a twenty-five dollars per vehicle per year for seven years and the other being five dollar vehicle, vehicle registration fee and then a three cent gas tax for five years. So I'll talk through both those scenarios a little bit so that you know a little bit more about those. I thought it was, well, it passed sixty-eight percent. In Oregon City, I added up all the, the votes from all the precincts in Oregon City. In Oregon City, it passed by sixty-four percent, still a pretty high percentage. I didn't go through the effort of figuring out where some of the jurisdiction, all areas that haven't passed, but we can get to that if we need to get there. But I think that's a, that's something that actually the county should do for us, is kind of share a little bit more. So, you know, some of this, if you're going to the meetings, I'm hoping to plant some seeds on some of the questions that maybe should be asked because I think that if, if the electeds are asking those questions, we're more likely to get a response than if, if I'm asking those questions.
I'm not so sure about that, but they're just willing to lie to us as they are to you.
Okay, so, let's see, next slide. So the twenty-five dollar per vehicle per year, seven year scenario is scheduled to, to raise over sixty million dollars. And that mechanism requires the county that they split the, the revenues that are generated from that. And so right now, the, according to the numbers they've given us, the sixty percent goes to the county and forty percent goes to the cities. So if you wanted to know my opinion, I like this one a little better than the, than the gas tax scenario. So for, in, in Oregon, vehicle registration fees are charged every two years, so it would be fifty dollars in addition to the eighty-six dollars that you pay to register a vehicle now. So the county has listed a hundred and fifteen miles of, of unincorporated areas that they're interested in spending this revenue for. They've got a lot more road miles than that, but this hundred and fifteen miles is what they've actually listed in terms of projects.
So I have a quick question. The forty percent that would, in this scenario, that would go to cities, is that just for road repairs? Or is it for new roads too or improvements or just for repairs?
Wait, it's, so it's yet to be determined and I think that's part of, that would be...
No, no, it's not yet to be determined.
Well, they haven't, they haven't written the, they haven't written the November election.
I was just wondering what they were thinking.
Hang on a second. The rules surrounding the vehicle registration fee split and how the money is to be used is based in state law.
Oh, the split, you're right.
So the forty percent, there is a set of rules in, in the ORS that says what we can use that money for.
So I know the split is there, I don't know that it's necessarily how we can use the money.
It talks about how the cities and the counties can, can spend that money, that it has to.
Is it for repairs?
It's not exactly, but it has to be transportation related and they, they do have some, you know, there is some structure there. I'd have to go back and look at it again.
Right, but I think that, that the question that maybe Commissioner Polly was asking was, does it have to be for a maintenance of a, of a pavement or can it be used for other things?
Right.
Like signal maintenance or expansion of a roadway or, you know, yeah, safety, those kind of things. And that piece, I think, is really where the county's looking for some input from the cities about how they, you know, see this being most successful in, in getting voter approval. And I think, I think there's some latitude there in the law. So, let's see, I wanted to say, you know, in Oregon City, we've got a hundred and thirty-nine miles, six miles of county roads in our jurisdiction that have yet to be jurisdictionally transferred. So inside of our city limits, there's like Abernathy Road for instance, that's a county road, piece of Beaver Creek Road. like Abernathy Road, for instance, that's a county road. Piece of Beaver Creek Road is a county road. So six miles in the city, and I think the county is, is not proposing to spend money on any city roads, but in this scenario, 40 percent would be available for the cities to spend how they choose on transportation. So, um, we've also got 12 miles of state highways, by the way, in our, in our jurisdiction. The other thing that I thought might be interesting is, Multnomah County is another county that, at least on the, on the ODOT website, indicated that they have a vehicle registration fee as well of $19. And I think they implemented that for the Selwood Bridge-
That's correct.
-project. So, uh, vehicle registration fees, county-specific, are, are not a new thing. This one's harder to read. Hopefully, you can read it in your version. Um, uh, just, it shows the breakout and of, of the funding, and actually, I can't read it now, so-
$544,000 and change.
Yeah, per year, per year. So, yeah, there we go. And then, uh, that totals up to 3.8 million. And I just wanted to give you, uh, population is, again, I don't believe that that's designated in the Oregon rule, that it has to be split by population. I think there's other methodologies by which they could split it. For instance, road miles, uh, you know, area. There's probably several methodologies for how they could split that. But this is based on population, and I think it's the, the direction that they're probably, it's a pretty straightforward, uh, way of doing it. Doesn't require a lot of analysis, and most people will probably support that, um, methodology. But it doesn't have to be by population, was my point. And the other thing, just to give you a comparison, so the Malala Avenue project, the grant that we pursued a couple of years ago between Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213, that was, um, a little over $6.5 million, so it gives you a sense. And then Main Street between 5th and, and 10th, that was, uh, almost $2.5 million for those projects. So it's, it's a good chunk of money, but, you know, we've got, you know, we, like the county, still have other needs for projects that probably aren't gonna qualify for pavement maintenance, utility funding, uh, or system development charges. They're just things that are outdated and old and need to be updated and resized, those kind of things. So, just wanted to share that. So this is the other scenario that they presented, which was a $5 per year, per vehicle, uh, registration fee with a 3 cent gallon, uh, per ga, 3 cent per gallon gas tax, and, and it's over a shorter period of time, over five years. Um, on the gas tax, it's a little different than the vehicle registration fees. Gas tax is, it would not, the revenues generated for that are not necessarily guaranteed to go back to the cities. What's not been clear, um, is whether or not the gas tax would be charged inside the city limits, if we weren't gonna get any of the money. I think the intent is to have a, a countywide gas tax, so gas stations in Oregon City, uh, would, would, you know, pay, uh, you know, customers would pay a gas tax as well as those outside. But that piece hasn't been clarified. I think we would, you know, it'd be good, again, good questions to ask as to what their intent really is with regard to that. If they're ta, talking about just unincorporated areas or, or what they have in mind there. At the, um, again, at the $5 vehicle registration fee, so that'd be $10 per vehicle every, um, two years, and it would raise $25 per vehicle over the five-year period. Um, gas tax does require voter approval, whereas the vehicle registration fee, whether it be the $5 version or the $25 version, um, doesn't necessarily, the, the Board of County Commissioners could adopt that through ordinance. They don't necessarily have to take that to a vote. But I think their, their intent has been always, is what they've said, is they're planning to take that to the voters.
I find it curious that the estimated annual revenue in the $25 VRF is 544,522, and the estimated five-year revenue on the $5 VRF and the gas tax is 544,522, exactly the same number.
Yeah, these are their numbers. I haven't, you're in, that's-
That is curious.
Yeah, that is curious.
Hmm.
Maybe there's a math quick.
Maybe somebody, uh, cut and pasted something wrong. I don't know.
They probably just took it and divided it by five, right?
So is that-
Five. Yeah, we can, we can look at that. I didn't look at that.
Uh, that's fine.
You gotta calculate it.
Like I said, a curiosity.
Again, they're still, I think, splitting this based on population, and, um, and I'm not sure that that is necessary or the right way, but it's a good way, at least at this level, to, to look at that. So, um, this, this is a general list. They provided a little more specifics in this, but I just thought I'd show, this is, um, they're basically suggesting if they were to get the vehicle registration fee at $25 per vehicle per year, they'd, uh, spend 3.7 million on what they're calling proposed safety improvements, which is curb warning signage. I mean, a lot of the problem with county roads is just lack of shoulders, not good signage coming up to sharper corners, so people running off that. Um, so they have a pretty robust, um, goal of limiting fatal in, uh, fatal accidents or major injuries. And they're trying to, um, apply, what I think they're trying to apply this to is a lot of those kind of safety improvements, rumble strips along, um, stretches of roadway where maybe car wandered off the road, that kind of thing. So that's what they're suggesting. And then, these are other projects, Beaver Creek Road, uh, really, uh, everything outside the city limits, they're proposing to improve, and then several other areas around the county where there, looks like they're kinda splitting it $4 million and, and change, depending on which project, or project areas you're looking at. So, um, pretty good, pretty good list. I think, for me, what was, what I think is a, a good thing for all of us to consider, if we're gonna pursue kind of a, a joint effort and something that would be supported by the cities, is having a project list, being specific about where you're gonna spend the money so that those voters, and try to pick projects that would have, you know, voter support. And, um, I don't know these projects well, other than the Beaver Creek Road project, but, um, I suspect they, they probably, uh, would have support from the community. So in, in that, um, uh, one thing that I, that, um, I should point out is kinda what you were talking about, Commissioner Polly. I think, you know, because we have a pavement maintenance utility fee, um, we would want to, to not necessarily replace that pavement maintenance utility fee. There's so much, um, unfunded need out there that's not gonna be paid for by SDCs. It's, it's in existing neighborhoods that need, uh, either more lane capacity, or they need traffic control measures like signalization. Uh, we've, we've talked about the intersection of, um, Malala and, uh, not Malala, well, Malala in Division-
12th, 12th and Washington.
Malala in Division, 12th and Washington, Lynn, Warner Parrot, um, Warner Milney, all those roads that come together right there, you know, that, those projects. Some of those projects have some SDC qualifying components to them that we're gonna be able to spend SDCs. The, the part of the puzzle that I haven't put together on those is the other funding, 'cause we can do some pavement maintenance work, we can associate some of that, but we really don't have the tax revenue from gas taxes to be able to fund that piece of the pie. And so, um, this kind of, this is where, I found this really, this vehicle registration piece, uh, intriguing, because I think we could spend it on things like some pedestrian connectivity projects, maybe projects that get, uh, school kid, you know, maybe within a half a mile of school, fix all those kinds of, you know, places where we need good sidewalks, uh, or improved crossings. Um, those, eh, safety enhancements like 12th and Washington, for instance, you know, we, we're likely gonna end up with a, a suggestion for, or a requirement for a signalization there. If, you know, if that happens, again, we already talked, we don't, we haven't budgeted for that, and some of that may be SDC fundable, but, uh, not all of it. So, um, and then, you know, we've got some corridor plans where we know that we don't have that. So, uh, you know, whatever the project is, I just, we've got some good ideas. Um, I, I just wanna sw, I'd hope that we could sway the county away or, uh, move them towards something that's a little more diverse for the cities, because we're not the only city with a street maintenance utility fee. Um, you know, so, and, and one of the things in this next slide here, you know, in our, in our ordinance, when we adopted the ordinance for the pavement maintenance utility fee, one of the things that it said was, you know, if another revenue source comes up for pavement maintenance, the city commissioner will go back and look at that and adjust that. I'm assuming that becomes then a replacement fund, and we need to look at that. And maybe, there's probably more to it in terms of looking at our pavement condition and how good we've been doing, but that program's been successful. Uh, I'd, I'd hate to find us having to, you know, change that program using this replacement funding that has a lot less certainty to it.
Well, does it say we have to, or does it just say we have to review it?
That's exactly what it says right there.
So, it doesn't say we have to adjust it, we just have to review it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, review it.
Which is a good idea.
I think the expectation is to put some, some thought into that, but, you know, I just think that it, that if the cities are given, if the county, uh, puts this together right, and what the cities should support should be those things that maybe go be above and beyond pavement maintenance, even though that seems to be their, their sales pitch is, I need pavement maintenance.
Because it could fill in the blanks, yeah.
Questions?
Nope.
No? Well, I, I have one statement to make, and that is, is that, um, at some point, are we putting the SeaSafe thing on in November? Is that what's going on?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we need to be circumspect about supporting, um, the county's, the county's fee at this point in time. I got a couple of calls this last week from citizens complaining about the fact that, you know, he's got a house that is sitting empty, that the water is turned off, yet he still pays over $100 a month in, in different utility fees, even though he's not using any water. So, you know, I explained to him the whole fairness thing and all that, but my point is, is that, uh, one, we have to be careful about protecting our yes vote on the SeaSafe thing, and two, that it's really easy to get 68 percent of the vote when you're not asking for anything. So, you know, uh, I would imagine that that number will plummet dramatically when they start actually asking somebody to spend $50 a year, $100 a year, or whatever it is. So I think we need to have an actual serious discussion about whether we wanna support this thing or not, um, given, given the light of the other things. And I know that anytime you see a new revenue source, you know, you're gonna clamor for it, I understand that, but we also have to protect all of the other things that we've got going on. And, uh, you know, we're still maintaining, what is it? We're about 55 cents under our mileage limit right now, you know? That's a fairly enviable position to be in, you know, around the metro area.
That's right.
Um, so, you know, we have that little bit of safety net if we need it, uh, but I think we need to have a far more serious discussion about this. I say we go to this thing on Thursday, we hear what they have to say, we can measure about how much we can believe, and then we can have a discussion about, you know, how the city wants to react to that.
All right, I agree with that. I got one of those calls also. And it's just, we do have to really look at our fees and be careful with the fees. And even though it's on the utility bill and there's the fairness, I understand that issue, but it hits renters, which I think is, is tough, so.
Well, times are tough all over. I mean-
I know, but we have to, you know, that's our job to listen and-
Sure, oh, yeah.
Take it all in and discuss it, so.
Anything further on this subject?
No, thank you for taking the time to listen, and I appreciate if you can make it, and, uh, that, because it'd be good for us to hear, so we know a little bit more about what direction to go when we have more of the staff-related meetings, 'cause lots of times we don't know.
Hanging on every word. Uh, Mr. Manager?
I don't know if any updates for tonight-